I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for peace and prosperity for the City of Goddard. We pray to you to give the governing body and city staff the wise decision-making skills to make the best decisions for this city. We pray to you in your name, amen.
All right. Has anybody had an opportunity to look over the agenda?
I'll make a motion to look through the agenda.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Second in the discussion. If they arrive.
Aye.
Both. The carries. Move on to citizens' comments. Any questions to come up for us to say, come up and state your name. We'll give you three minutes to ask questions or express an opinion or whatever you got.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Turnus. I live at Brentwood Apartments here at the end of Main Street. And for the last five years or so, I've been the caretaker, if you will, of the community garden. So that's just got, I brought some pictures so you can watch that and listen to me. But I was trying to figure out what's going to go on. I really heard anything specific or any, what the direction is, if there is a direction. And it's time to start planning if the garden is still going to be, it's going to be put in storage, or if you have an idea where you're going to move it to. But first, I wanted to say thank you. The last five years, especially during COVID, that place saved my life because it was like a sanctuary. There's not a lot of, unfortunately, there's not a lot of city, not a city, there's not a lot of public participation. So it's truly a sanctuary because I've been able to plant what I want. I don't want to see anything go away, so there's these empty plots, so I'm a farmer, if you will. So I've been sharing with the neighbors. I don't do the farmer's market. I'm not much of a salesman, so, but it's been a real blessing, not just to me, but to quite a few other folks. So thank you for that. And with that being said, if you have, where, can you tell me where going with the community garden, please?
The plan has been all along, and we have provisions in place with the property owner that purchased the ground from the city to allow another season's growth there. And then concurrently to that, while the city's pursuing the ground for a new community center, at that time, we hope to be able to relocate the community garden to the community center grounds until such time as we need to expand the community garden. We will obviously incorporate that design around the space so that it's a lasting, permanent aspect of the site and linear park as well. So the city council, at the last council meeting, has directed through the resolution the city attorney to begin those proceedings, and we're still in the process of clearing title. And once that occurs, then we'll be able to proceed with, you know, securing the property for the public purpose. But otherwise, I think we should be...
So do you have an idea when I need to evacuate, if you will?
Well, you'll have another season, another growing season.
Another year after this?
Yes.
Oh, really? Okay.
And then at that time, you know, and it may be such that we can go ahead and relocate it next spring.
Right.
If, you know, we get everything tidied up with respect to the acquisition of grounds.
Okay. Well, real quick, what I want to also convey to you is that the further it goes from me, the less active I'll be in the garden. So I would like to suggest, and we can talk off camera sometime, because you really ought to consider, if you're going to move the garden, you really ought to consider making it more of a PR project because not a lot of folks want to come to garden. But they would sure walk through a butterfly habitat, botanical place, garden mix, where they can come and learn, they can come and sample. But to enjoy the community aspect of it without, you're going to have to probably pay somebody. And I'm sure you've got a, somebody quite qualified to do that. And that's what I would suggest because it's a lot of work. I mean, I mow the lawns, I fix the boards and whatever needs to be done. And then lately, we're having to chain things up because we've got some people that like it more than we do. So what's disappeared is no big deal, but I still have the lawnmower, the rototiller, and all those things that need to be secured. Anyway, that being said, I sure want to thank you for your time. And I'll wait to...
Just keep in touch with Brian and we'll keep you informed.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and thank you for that extra year.
That is well aware of that as well. So if you're unable to get ahold of me, you can just reach out to him.
Something, I noticed that you said that there's not a lot of community involvement.
Correct.
I didn't even know we had a community garden until I was on council. So I don't know if that's something like we could have you give us some type of information as to what all it consists of, the help you need, what it entails to be involved in that, and that's something we could put on the City of Goddard website so that...
It comes out in the water bill once a year.
Okay.
Just a little blurb that it's, you know, if you're interested, because it's membership, so, and it doesn't cost anything, which is great because you haven't had a, the water, excellent, that I got water back there. But as far as, my policy is, they give me 10 bucks, 20 bucks, they take care of it, they clean it up, and I give my money back. Just come out and play in the dirt, basically. But unfortunately, it's like pulling teeth. If they're a gardener, they probably have property, and so they're already involved at home, and it's, why go down the street? But getting the word out probably, and getting them moved wherever you're going to move to.
Yeah, I think that'll...
Promote it, and like I said, turn it into some sort of a PR thing because the below's green, butterflies are dying, that sort of thing. Anyway, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who would like to come for the council?
We can't really hear back here.
Is there anybody else that have, would like to approach the council?
Are you talking about all issues? I mean, on...
We'll have a public hearing for the assessments, and there'll be a public comment portion during that administered by...
All right. If no one else would like to speak during citizens' comments, we'll call them citizens' comments. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda, as I've had a chance to look at it.
Nobody has any questions, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All favor eye?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. We'll move on to item G, unfinished business.
and then, once we get through the background and analysis portion, we'll convene the public hearing. And then upon the conclusion of the public hearing, an ordinance will be presented for your consideration at that time. What we have here this evening is a public hearing and a subsequent ordinance, should the council desire to proceed with the general obligation issuance with respect to the temp notes that were issued for Arbor Creek addition, Cloverleaf Farms Phase One, and Elk Ridge addition Phase Three. We authorize these improvements pursuant to the special assessment statutes, KSA 12-6A01. The documents that we're considering for the hearing this evening and in the follow-on resolution authorizing the offering of sale are based upon the Series 2022-1 General Obligation Special Assessments that were issued concurrently for all three of these as a bundle. The proceedings this evening, again, are for Arbor Creek, Cloverleaf, and Elk Ridge. We approved the statement of final cost, which will go through the 17 projects and subsequent slides by their subdivision on September 19th, 2022, in that you directed the clerk to notify and to publish the notice of public hearing and to certify the assessment rolls and to proceed with the preliminary estimates for the permanent financing. The statement of final cost for Arbor Creek, Cloverleaf, and Elk Ridge are as follows. For Arbor Creek, we have the sanitary sewer improvements with a final cost of $86,996.89. That was authorized with Resolution 21-24. The collector was with 21-25 Authorization Resolution and a final cost of $253,345.52. Paving improvements were authorized by Resolution 2126 and a final cost of $691,202.18. The collector water improvements, which is generally known as a transmission line or a water main, was authorized with Resolution 21-27 with a final cost of $156,476.77. Project Five was the sanitary sewer improvements authorized with Resolution 19-08 with a final cost of $535,809.15. Project number six is for Arbor Creek Phase One Stormwater Sewer Improvements authorized with Resolution 19-10 with a final cost of $358,085.11. Paving improvements for Phase One were authorized with Resolution 19-12 with the final cost of $665,981.3. Project number eight, Phase One Water Distribution Improvements were authorized with Resolution 19-29 with a final cost of $231,926.64. And the final Arbor Creek project is project number nine, Phase One Grading Improvements authorized with Resolution 19-30 with a final cost of $307,864.6. We did receive one inquiry from a resident in Arbor Creek and also had some comments submitted via email which have been included in the record and you have before you this evening. And MICA had created in response to this discussion a legend which shows the total assessments for Arbor Creek based upon this discussion. And as you are aware, we have this collector road, and then you have the primary paving road, and then we have, with just noting that this is Phase Two. So we want to keep that separate. So the items here are not, none of this down here, I should say, is currently under improvement. So although they are subject, as you can see from the yellow shaded areas, to a portion of the collector cost for this assessment, and those are currently retained by the developer. Cloverleaf, we have sanitary sewer improvements for Project 10, and that was authorized with Resolution number 21-15 for $654,382.46. Project 11, storm water, which was authorized with Resolution 21-16 with a final cost of And that cost is, as you are aware, for a significant portion of that was in the floodplain, so required substantial storm water and grading works for that cost. Phase One paving improvements were authorized with Resolution number 21-17 with a final cost of $570,047.36. Project 13 Waterline Improvements were authorized by Resolution 21-18 with a final cost of Elk Ridge, we have essentially Phase Three, but there was a smaller Phase Three paving portion, so technically, this is Phase Four, but still under the original Resolution Authorization of 19-17 with a final cost of $585,339.3. The sanitary sewer improvements for Phase Three Elk Ridge were authorized with Resolution 19-26 with a final cost of $335,467.73. And the final project, number 17, was Phase Three Watermain Improvements with Authorization Resolution 19-28 with a final cost of $54,085.80. The proposed ordinance that will be presented upon conclusion of the public hearing will be special assessments for the improvements authorized and constructed within the temporary notes that we referenced earlier. Exhibit A-1 of the ordinance apportioned the cost within the improvement district of Arbor Creek Addition Collector, Arbor Creek Addition Phase One, Cloverleaf Farms Addition Phase One, and Elk Ridge Addition Phase Three. The notice of assessment dated September 19th, 2022 notified the property owners of the ordinance and that the assessments may be paid in whole or in part by, I made a typo on that, I apologize. It's before October 18th, 2022. The date's to be collected in 20 annual installments in accordance with the provisions of the special assessment statutes, KSA 12-6A01 at SEC. And the ordinance essentially has copies of the notice of the assessment, Schedule I, the certificate of mailing, the certificate of the city treasure, and the summary of the ordinance that's to be published in this Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, Times Sentinel News. The ordinance approves and imposes the assessments, the notice of assessment, the certificate of mailing, the certificate of the treasure, and the ordinance summary, which is available on the city website. After passage of the ordinance, the next actions would be taken by the city council with the adoption of the bond cell authorization resolution following this agenda item, and the bond cell date scheduled for Monday, November 7th, 2022. The property owner, which was the developer, petitioned the improvements presented herein for both Elk Ridge Phase One and Phase Two, as well as all the other subdivisions that we currently have in Goddard that are active. Failure to assess the parcels is petitioned by the developer and defined within present statutory process results in the city at large incurring the cost of financing the improvements. The documents have been drafted by City Bond Council Kevin Cowan at Gilmore and Bell and are based on the assessments and costs identified by city staff and the city financial officer Brett Shogun of Stiefel Nicholas, and reviewed and approved by city attorney Ryan Peck. At this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor and the board to convene the public hearing for the purposes of receiving oral and written objections. If there are no questions over the background material at this time, thank you.
All right. We're going to open a public hearing, so if you have something you'd like to talk to the council about, or questions you'd like to ask the council, you've got three minutes to come up, state your name, address what your concerns are, or what your thoughts are concerning this, this fee that's going to be tacked on to your property.
Terry O'Brien, 1077 Arbor Creek Report. So I've got some questions. The first one is, you talked about the collector. We got these sheets, several pages of charges listed, and there's Phase One and collector, so I don't know what the collector charges are and the Phase One charges. So does anybody here know the answer to that? Phase One and collector?
Yes, Phase One would be the paving specifically to, or the water and sewer lines specifically serving your property as petitioned, and the collector would be essentially the main or for paving, the primary thoroughfare, or what we would call a arterial, which would be pond E, is fed by primary feeder, and that's also known, or is the engineer's petitioned as a collector, meaning a traffic collector that then queues out onto the arterial. So it's a choice of word, it's a word choice by the developer's engineer.
Okay. So then, under a collector, you've got charges listed for paving on blocks and lots that are yet to be paved, but there's charges listed and are not shown on the page available on Arbor Creek office. Why are the paving charges for these about 40% cheaper than the blocks and lots listed in Phase One? Why are there slower charges for paving roads in the future that have to cost more?
Again, those are, the framework that's presented here is in accordance with the petition by the developer, who was the sole property owner at that time, and he, it's to carry a, because they're paying for not only that access point off of 23rd Street to travel through, but then when their road, when that road is extended into their area that will be constructed at some point into the future, they'll also be paying for an additional road extension there that's beyond their actual street that, say, like a cul-de-sac or whatnot that that's on there. That would be a separate...
But are they also going to pay for part of Arbor Creek Street, which is the main road coming in?
They're already paying. That's what that smaller, lesser portion is.
So why are we paying more for that same thing than they are? Forty percent less?
Because you're using a, you're using that entire one, they're using a portion of that in addition to theirs.
Yeah, but it's the only entrance in and out of there for now. I mean, I don't know if there's another one. I don't know if there's another, they're all going to use Arbor Creek.
As a percentage, that's apportioned based upon, again, the petition. There's several ways that those can be presented, and this is common. It's utilized in other suburbs similar to Valer or Mays. So what's occurring here is no different than what happens at the City of Wichita or any other first-tier suburb.
Okay. Does that seem like the best way to do it? The best way is?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to come and speak to the council? No, we'll close the public hearing. There's some locker places on here. Item H, no?
He's making notes.
Now we have to wave. I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance. Go back.
A second.
And place the ordinance into the official record as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second. If you follow, favor eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to consider the ordinance.
Anywhere a motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaven?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Passes ordinance number 898.
Move on to item H.
Item G2 would be the resolution authorizing the offering of sale for the general obligation bond, Series 2022-1, for the authorized improvements for Arbor Creek Addition Phase One Collector, Cloverleaf Farms Addition Phase One, and Elk Ridge Addition Phase Three. Again, this is very similar to what you just saw regarding the background on the issuance of the general obligation temporary notes. It's a repeat of the projects that we covered in depth in the last agenda item. The principal amount for the general obligation issuance is $6,620,000. It also authorizes Gilmore and Bell and Stiefel and Nichols to act on behalf of the city and to work with staff to prepare and distribute the preliminary official statement for the marking of bonds and the necessary documents for the marketing of the issuance. Redemption would be determined by the issuer, and the delivery date would be honored before December 1st, 2022, as the...
December first, twenty twenty-two, as the series nineteen dash one maturity date retires on that day. So essentially, this temporary note will take the funds from this issuance and pay it off at that time. And the principal amount for the issuance on nineteen dash one is six million, three hundred thousand. The certificate regarding the preliminary official statement, Rule G thirty-two, the notice of sale, the notice to seek potential private placement or to market it on the open market, as well as to have an official bid form approved to form is what is in this resolution. The city council will consider these bids from the offering at the November seventh, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting. Again, it's through the assessment process, failure to do so would be an obligation on the part of the city at large to pay. Documents have been crafted by Bond Council Kevin Cowan and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, approved as to form. Are there any questions over the offering of sale? Yeah, it's mainly just the forms at this point where.
I guess that's where I got confused. I thought it was all happening in one swoop.
Yeah. Now, this will be, because of the size of the issuance, and we have both Bond Council Kevin Cowan and Brett Shogren from Stiefel here to answer any questions if you have anything on the sequencing, but with our rating, our bond rating, we think we'll get favorable terms given the increase in rates at this time, so.
Brian, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
It's more for my benefit. Now, they had the opportunity to come in and pay by the October something date.
Yes.
Right. Now, do, but they still, do they still have to pay interest on that payment, or does interest get deducted from that?
They would not pay interest.
You wouldn't pay interest?
Because you're reducing the principal amount of issuance.
Okay, so, okay, so you, they would save, and they had that one-time opportunity to pay?
In whole or in part?
Okay.
Yeah, if they pay, if they prepay their special assessments, we'll use that, those funds to reduce the size of the bond issue, and then whenever the assessments are levied, the bonds are sold, and then that property would not.
And it's an interesting thing, because actually I shared an email a year or two ago, because Kansas City does not really utilize the special assessment process, and the residents, Harlan, you may remember, the residents were up in arms over the assessment process, and it was a lack of communication on city, on the city's part, the developer's part, and a lack of understanding by the residents, because if you don't special assess, all of these costs are wrapped into the actual mortgage for your home, because it all goes into the cost of the lot. So that drives your cost up. And then, because we're a general obligation debt, our rates are significantly less than what a person's mortgage rate is. So all of these costs, if we weren't special assessing them, would be at a higher amount for, it would be on your mortgage. And so also, what they say you qualify for would then eat away at the value of the home or the amount of home that you could in theory afford through that mortgage. So the special assessments that's on the books and available across the state, but really heavily utilized here in the Wichita metro and Sedgwick County, is really a windfall savings for the residents, because we're able to offer debt at two to three percent where your mortgages are at, you know, six. So it's a sizable savings on behalf of the citizens with this general obligation that the full faith and credit of the citizens of Goddard put forward for the growth of the community.
What's the average special assessments on a lot?
Well, I would defer to a developer, but as a general rule, you know, they try and keep them as low as possible, and ideally around two hundred dollars a month.
A month. What's your special assessments total?
So for us, at ten seventy-seven Arbor Creek Park, it's like forty-three thousand dollars, but if you, the lot was cheaper, it's like, I forget, I think thirty-two something. If you go up the Kansas City area, you're going to pay, for the whole, you're going to pay seventy thousand for the lot. And so this is, it is a good deal. You know, it's not, like, mine works out to about a hundred and eighty-one dollars plus interest. Over a twenty-year period, I'll never be there in twenty years, I'm seventy-six. I'm not worried about it.
You might. You've got to be an optimist, plus it's half full.
You're not very optimistic.
No, I'll move before that. Anyway.
I was just curious. Thank you, Terry.
So if there are no further questions, the process would be by voice vote to move, present and move for the adoption of the resolution?
Do we have a motion? Would you present move for the adoption of the resolution?
I'll make that motion to present and move for the adoption of the resolution.
Third second?
Second.
And you could also, at this time, waive the reading, and the mayor can then enter it into the record as read.
Okay.
By voice vote.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, hold, favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I guess we present move, right?
Now you consider the resolution and declared as passed, defeated, or table, whatevers. And that would be a voice vote. I'm sorry, I omitted that in this line.
I guess I went right.
We're right here. I just forgot to put voice. So you waived the reading, and you entered it as read, and now you consider the resolution.
Make a motion to the mayor to declare the resolution.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Stop. That was a.
I'll say. Okay, then I'll say that. You didn't really finish. His motion and to consider the resolution.
Any discussion?
Defeated and tabled.
Hold, favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The resolution twenty twenty, sorry, twenty-two, twenty.
Oh, the governing body. This is supposed to say twenty twenty-two standard traffic ordinance, so this is just what we annually do to adopt the revisions to the standard traffic ordinance. The standard traffic ordinance is a uniform code derived from the Kansas statutes. It includes local amendments pertinent to traffic laws. So the proposed ordinance includes only local amendments previously approved by the governing body. The STO has been reviewed and recommended by the city prosecutor, chief of police, and the city administrator. The last edition, the twenty twenty-one edition of the STO, was adopted on September twentieth of twenty twenty-one. So the twenty twenty-two amendments included in the proposed ordinance maintain the city of Goddard's compliance with applicable Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. The new changes are listed in your agenda reports, and the police department is responsible for enforcing the STO. So the ordinance must be published in the official paper of record. As the proposed ordinance amends sections of the STO which have been deemed unnecessary for the city. There must be at least three copies of the STO on file with the city clerk, and each police officer is issued a copy of the most current STO adopted by the city council. So there is a small cost with publication. City legal staff has reviewed the proposed ordinance and has approved and consented to form. The city is authorized to adopt the STO by the reference under the authority and in accordance with the following KSAs. So the recommendation is to adopt the proposed ordinance of the twenty twenty-two forty-ninth edition of the standard traffic ordinance. If there are no comments, I'd like for a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Do you have any questions concerning the ordinance? Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hold, favor, aye?
Aye.
Take a motion to consider the ordinance.
Make a motion to consider the ordinance.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hold, favor, aye?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, that's fine. I mean, that's a good reading, you know.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Ordinance eight ninety-nine.
All right, and this would also be the twenty twenty-two Uniform Public Defense Code. Goddard annually adopts revisions to the Uniform Public Defense Code. Again, it's derived from Kansas statutes and includes the local amendments adopted by the city council each year. The proposed ordinance includes only local amendments previously approved by the governing body. Again, it's reviewed and approved by the prosecutor, chief of police, and the administrator. And the twenty twenty-one edition of the UPOC was adopted on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and then there was a small amendment that was adopted and published on November fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. Same thing here. Amendments included. Maintain the city's compliance with applicable Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. There are several changes, again, that can be noted in your agenda reports, and again, the police department is responsible for enforcing this. Will be published in the paper of record, the Times Sentinel, and the police officers also carry the UPOC on them. Same thing here, small publication cost. It would have been reviewed by the legal staff, and this is the twenty twenty-two thirty-eighth edition of the Uniform Public Defense Code. And so with that being said, if there are no comments, would we waive the reading of the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hold, favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to consider the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
That would be ordinance number nine hundred.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council, we have a resolution amending and supplementing resolutions eighteen thirteen and resolution twenty dash seventeen for the Star Bond District Industrial Revenue Bonds. Essentially, we're extending the effective date from October first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to allow time for additional administrative work to occur. Just kind of the background, and this is just the synopsis, because if you were to go into, say, an issuance transcript, we have literally about four pages of action items that we've taken on the part of the governing body and staff that's prepared for this Star Bond project in whole. What we're most concerned with is the October twenty-second, twenty eighteen passage of the resolution authorizing the issuance of fifty-five million, five hundred thousand in industrial revenue bonds, as well as the December twenty-first, twenty twenty resolution twenty dash seventeen, increasing that authorized amount to sixty-five million. We did increase the Phase Two allocation with the issuance and delivery of ten million dollars worth of additional Star Bond financing on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. The resolution extends the effective date from October first until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, so we anticipate further action by the council between this meeting and the end of the year for the IRB process to continue beyond twenty twenty-two. The remainder of the resolutions beyond the date that the IRB is valid would be unchanged for both resolutions. There's no direct cost associated with the adoption of the resolution. It was authored by bond attorney Kevin Cowan and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, and the resolution becomes effective upon adoption by the council. It's our recommendation that you adopt the resolution amending and supplementing resolutions eighteen thirteen and twenty dash seventeen for the private improvements within the Goddard Star Bond District, extending the effective date from October first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I wanted to extend this, because as you know, the Star Bond thing isn't going quite as fast from one to two, and so we've got to give it, I guess, time to try to close things up, and that's why we're extending this to December, and hopefully have it wrapped up by December, so we can get the effective orders to happen. So we need to have the motion then?
Yes, sir. All motion to adopt the proposed resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
One second? Hold, favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold.
Resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Honorable mayor and city council, this is item H point four, the Arbor Creek Phase Three Final Replat. So quick background, MKEC Engineering has submitted an application for replat of a portion of the Arbor Creek development. This replat will add two new lots and allow for walkout basements in and around the second entrance location onto Twenty-third Street. The city follows the plating process of replating the same way with new plats requiring both pre-plated and final plated. With change in design plans comes a necessity for revised stormwater engineering study, which has been reviewed by the city engineer, MKEC. With the introduction of two new lots came the need for either elevated pad sites to meet engineering requirements or an off-site detention pond. Developer would like to have off-site detention pond, because during the creation of the pond, the dirt that is activated can be used for pad sites for the new phase development, which is more cost-effective than hauling in dirt from elsewhere. The planning commission approved the replat on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Contingent pond final review and approval by city attorney of the off-site drainage agreement, Robert Cogindal and Morse Lang. Representative City has reviewed the agreement and approved it. City council has considered improving the final replat of Arbor Creek Phase Three. It's going to be replatted from forty-four to forty-two, from forty to forty-four from forty-two, and it's going to revise stormwater management. Land use will remain single-family detached. Current existing zoning is R one single-family residential. And this is the final replat. This is going to be the off-site detention over here. There's a lot of details here, so feel free to look at your agenda item. It's going to have a lot of supplemental information in there. Here's the second page of the final replat. So here's Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, Arbor Creek to Gate. Phase One is, at this point, pretty much filled out. Phase Two is well underway. The developer would like to add two more lots to Phase Three, which will actually open up this second entrance way off of Twenty-third Street into the development. That replat, as mentioned, would put in two more lots. This is the off-site detention pond right over here. As mentioned, it's easier to buy dirt over here and bring it in for the grading and pad sites, as opposed to hauling dirt in from a different location. And during excavation of the dirt, if they can put a detention pond here, that'll either help mitigate the stormwater that will be required to be mitigated on this site, which will allow them to put the pads at a lower, at a lower depth, as opposed to having to build it up higher so that they can put in walkout basements. Financially non-legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended the city council approve the final replat for the Arbor Creek second edition contingent upon acceptance of off-site drainage proposal. And we do have MKC, I believe, somewhere. There you are, if you want. Any questions about engineering? We do have Scott Evans of MKEC representing the developer to answer any engineering-related questions, and we do have obviously Harlan representing the city for engineering.
Mike, can I ask a question?
You.
Do, do, do we know, do we know if they got an approved, an agreement approved?
So they worked with.
Or they're still working on it, or?
Well, they got a favorable report from Mr. Agnew, who's the property owner over here.
Okay.
And he is, as far as we know, so far in agreements with signing it. He just wanted to know where that's going to be discharged, which I believe they're going to discharge the water through this easement into this, down through this area here, which is a reserved area, into this perennial stream.
So they got a favorable report.
So Mr. Agnew's in favor of signing the agreement, which was approved by Robert Cogindal and Morse Lang. So Mr. Agnew's in favor of signing the agreement, which was approved by Robert Cogindal and Morse Lang.
I would like to make the motion as presented.
Motion to approve the final replat? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hold, favor Ryan?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you very much.
Do we reconsider our cut design?
Honorable mayor and council, this is a design agreement amendment number three. We initially started the R-cut discussions back in May of 2019, with KDOT participating for the cost of construction and an amount not to exceed two million. As you are aware, the costs for constructing something in 2019 is vastly different than the cost in 2022. As such, um, we needed to increase the design amount, but along the way, we added some additional design work for connecting roads, which slightly altered the, uh, the design of the frontage road, which would essentially require a median due to the proximity of the road dumping onto the frontage road. And then, due to the costs of the R-cut going above four million, the, uh, the state's willing to pick up four million of that, with the city picking up the remainder. And so to tweak that design, we had to defer the connector road and the one hundred and eighty-third Street geometric improvement project, all of which were included in the capital improvement program. So we're able to get the R-cut in place, which is also a requirement of our, um, our design, I'm sorry, our development agreement with the Star Bond site and the state for access into the site. So this six-point, almost six point seven million, uh, over half of it's coming from the state, with the city picking up the remainder financed through the one point five million that we had already allocated for the original R-cut, and then taking the money that would have gone for local participation in the connector road and the one hundred and eighty-third Street geometric project to make up that, that shortfall there. Uh, this was the, uh, the previous design, which includes a median on the frontage road here. So traffic would have had to come in and do a U-turn to get through on Crown Drive. And what we're doing now is essentially removing the median, putting stop thresholds. And this will be a stop sign here. And so this concept, essentially, this design amendment will take this schematic and make it construction-grade engineering available, ready to go. And that'll be an extra thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, bringing the total design, which includes the connector road that's already been paid for, and the eastbound traffic. So as you're aware, the road here needs to be rebuilt, and so the state's paying for that, and that's included in this cost here as well. So it's, it's beyond just this little intersection here. It'll be down to one eighty-third, will be full-depth reconstruction anew. So that total cost then comes up to four hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Uh, the R-cuts included in our current capital improvement program for 2022 and 2023. As I said previously, we have one point five already set aside in finance, and we're taking the local participation from those previous two funds to round that up for the city's contribution. Are there any questions over this? I mean, it's, at this point, it's an administrative kind of maneuver, and we're hopeful that, um, because this concept and preliminary design had passed field checks previously, it should be a fast review by KDOT, and we anticipate still being able to advertise here in the late third quarter, early fourth quarter of this year for construction soon after the first of the year, or whenever we can get on someone's schedule.
If there are no questions, it's the recommendation to authorize the execution of the amendment agreement number three in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the US fifty-four four hundred Kellogg Avenue and Crown Drive R-cut scope services with Tran Systems. Sorry for the typo.
Harland, your concerns on that?
No, no, this is actually taking us back to where we originally started before the median was added. So, no, I think it should, should be fully functional, according to their design.
All right. You prepared to authorize the execution of the amendment?
I'll authorize the execution of the amendment. And, uh, yeah, make a motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hold, favor Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Honorable mayor and council, I may say this, we all be consider the sale of various pieces of equipment of public works. We have three pieces of equipment that have received that are useful live. All of them have been taken out of service due to various mechanical issues, and we request approval to replace the following items on an auction size, such as Purple Wave or Garewell Roads for sale. The first is our Ledley two thousand four F-150 pickup, a Gary in Ledley drove. For so many years-
And you can't give that up, can you?
Well, we should see his twenty-two GM, so it's pretty nice. It's pretty sharp, so Gary took one for the team, and he's the only guy with a, with a, um, a signed truck. He drove this faithfully for many years, and it's worn out. It's got a hundred and forty-two thousand miles on the odometer when it quit working. Significant amount of rust on the body and, and whatnot, as you can see. It has mechanical issues. A day before his new truck came in, he pulled into the yard, the brakes went away, and he coasted it to a spot and we fucked it. So that's why we'd like to sell that one, it was purchased new in two thousand and four. The next item is a nineteen ninety-seven International Dump Truck. It has a hundred and eighty-seven thousand plus on the odometer and ten thousand plus hours. We purchased this used from KDOT in two thousand and nine. The engine has a bad cylinder. About a year and a half ago, the radiator went out, which I guess is a common thing on these. The fins go away, and they don't cool anymore, and you don't know until it gets hot. Gets hot, and our operator shut it off quickly, but it's one of those things, a secondary cause of that is that one cylinder goes out. So we took it in, it was over twenty thousand dollars, replaced the engine. It's got a rust in the bed, the posts are rotting. Needs electrical work, and we would, if we were to continue to use it on the road for snow, it needs a, either rebuild or a new plow. If we were to sell this, we would include these bed mounted spreader and plow that came with it when I got from KDOT. Final item is the two thousand New Holland five-five-E Baco. It's got just over sixty-six hundred operator hours. Has quite a few hydraulic issues, and overall, it's, it's just worn out. We kept it running, and it was a good Baco, but it's just finally, finally kicked the buck, and we fondly refer to it as the Mayor Baco. From the movie Cars, anyway. We purchased that in two thousand new, and it is currently nonoperable. Financials, there's none. They charge us a small percentage of sales price, so we don't lose any money. We don't have to spend any money to sell it. Legal, I don't believe there's anything associated with that. Are there any questions?
Can we take our decals off before we sell them?
We, we can. I mean, I think in the past, we actually have left them on the last truck we sold, but it's probably a good idea if we took them off. So yes, we can take them off.
All right. You prepared to approve the advertising and sale of the contingency mission?
So motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hold, favor Ryan?
Aye.
Close.
One dollar reserve.
Make sure they give you money that you can send to me.
Lucky to give Gary the first chance at that pickup.
Well, hopefully he'll buy it, just right, it's his personal car. But he never said a word. He took over the team and drove that old truck till it died.
Uh, it's, uh, the September, which means it's league voting delegate time. The meeting this year is October twelfth through the fourteenth in Overland Park, and we have essentially two voting delegates and up to two alternates. It's staff's recommendation that you appoint two delegates and two alternate delegates. If, uh, if you're desiring to attend the conference, registration's two hundred and forty dollars each. Miles and miles are covered and reimbursable. We have it programmed in the budget. And nominate a slate of delegates if anyone's interested in attending. If not, then usually a member of staff goes.
Does anyone have any desire to go up to the convention up there, or?
Oh, I can't, I can't, yeah.
I can't hear.
Well, I'm in it, I'll be in a convention all week, so I'll be missing my-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't miss another hole.
The twelfth through the fourteenth?
Eight through the tenth.
I can't do it.
Is it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
It's eight through the tenth, yeah.
I think it starts out, well, basically on a Friday night or something.
Go back to the-
It says Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
We have, we have contradictory.
So it's the eight through the tenth, which is a Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
I can't.
I believe I can. Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Larry, you were going with me? You gonna be my travel buddy?
I'm giving it some thought. I can't be there on Monday, but I could be there Saturday, Sunday.
Okay. Uh, me and you. So it'll be, the two, the slate would be for, uh-
Where we stay, do we, uh?
I'll get, I'll get you reservations, um, at the hotel.
I don't know if we go up, I know my wife will let me go along, she trusts me, so.
So we'll, we'll have, uh-
That's in Topeka?
No, this one's in Overland Park.
That's not getting in the way of the council, maybe, over here this morning.
No.
Because it's Orlando State, so even if it was, we wouldn't have it. I make a motion to nominate a slate of delegates consisting of Hunter and Larry.
Okay, there are motions?
Second.
Hold, favor Ryan?
Aye.
Close.
Uh, the city administrators' report, uh, you can see the, the Star Bond sites is, is coming along, and you can see some vehicles there for the health club that's now open. So you have the hotel on the right, uh, the health club with, uh, health club and childcare here. The higher roof would be the water park, and this concave roof would be the, uh, the swimming pools and the aquatics center and auditorium that's financed through, uh, the Star Bonds. So these ball fields and this building here is the Star Bond funds, with private funding coming for the hotel, the health club, and the water park, and, uh, the expanded health club and childcare facilities there. You can see a view of the second phase of ball fields. Essentially, the only thing that really keeps it from looking ready to go would be the, uh, the concession and, and, uh, spectator slash announcing area.
They played on it last weekend.
I was going to say, they were playing on it already.
Yeah, it's, as you know, this is under construction, and they've got the parking area there, ready to go. Uh, you can see Arbor Creek looking back to the south southwest. Another view looking more south with the clubhouse facilities. Elk Ridge. And the latest foundation. Cloverleaf, you can see Phase Two being finished up with the start of Phase Three. This is, uh, looking back with Phase Three to the south, coming back and around, then come out. And the next one will show you a phase map. So the gray here is Phase One, and that's what we considered this evening. Phase Two, and then Phase Three, which is currently nearing completion. Rusty Creek, you can see the houses coming along there. Just an update on your August first. We've got the culvert installation on Twenty-third and the, uh, concrete alleyway completed, and Brooke reports that we're shooting for the first, second week in October for the cedar and utility cut improvements. What we look to have coming down the pipe in October, and this isn't a full slate, this is, uh, tentative, uh, this is just partial, uh, Star Bond plat, Wells Underwood plat. We'll have a discussion on growth with Wichita now crossing one sixty-seventh at Maple. They're essentially ready to go north of us to, um, to what would be one hundred and eighty-third. They're, they're just one property away from being able to do that now. And so we'll have that growth discussion. Uh, we'll also talk about the equity and benefit fees. We'll have a side sprinkler system for the parking storm shelter, splash pad matapole update, and the administrative code updates as well. Are there any questions for myself or city staff over these projects or anything else? If not, that concludes my report.
All right, we move on to governing body amendments. Hunter?
Brian, I know I talked to you, uh, several weeks ago about how much money we have spent with the Times Sentinel and, uh-
Yeah.
And these, uh, these adjustments, you know, these ordinance changes. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but one of my questions I did have was, since we have the news article in our, on our bills, our water bills, or our website, are we able to just do it through that? Or I know that's a legislative thing, but that's probably a question for you, Ryan.
For public notice?
The publishing notice to the Times Sentinel, you know, were required by the legislature too.
Yeah. We can't do it via social media or on our website. We've got to do it through a local newspaper. Okay.
And we, we also have certain bond provisions that Kevin can speak to that requires an affidavit of application.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
No comment tonight.
Right.
Man, I went to, uh, oh, the farmer's, farmer's garden, you know, what is it, the farmer's market? There was four booths there on Saturday, right? Saturday morning? Yeah. Big old four booths. And it was down the street. I don't, I thought it was usually over here at the park.
It hasn't been for-
We're not associated with that. The city's not, they do that on their own.
Oh, really? They do that on their own?
It's a private event. Now, we used to have our own farmer's market that was hosted by the city, and we would partner with different, um, different, different individuals who wanted to have booths and whatnot. We'd have it on the near park, because it's a public space. Now, now it's a private farmer's market, it's on private land, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's different, different organization.
So we don't do it anymore?
Well, we could consider it in the future, but currently we don't.
Then why was the, uh, what was going on Saturday at the park?
Ruth's Peak Golf Tournament. I think Thatcher can speak to it.
There was a disc golf professional, or amateur, I guess, disc golf tournament. So there's-
And they had the sidewalk closed off?
Do what?
Did a banner across the sidewalk?
Yeah, they were trying to redirect some of the trail traffic, so there was not too much interference, so. I think they briefly redirected traffic through there.
It should have been, I think it should have been mentioned. Did you mention that? On the Facebook side or anything like that, or?
No, we'll, we'll look at doing that in the future.
Okay.
That was not a mistake.
That's all I have.
All right. How's your water situation going?
Everything is doing fine, I'll come over this, and has been. So I'm pretty confident in our moving forward, so.
You got the well up and running now?
Same, I'm sorry.
The well up and running?
Um, everything's up and running, except we didn't turn five off, because we're ripped in- Um, everything's up and running, except we didn't turn five off, because we're within just under two and a half million below our cap, and we'll pull that reserve in case we need that extra water, otherwise we won't run it this year. So we don't get over cap. Yeah, maximum.
Actually, I do get a little comment, I guess. I can go against this.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
What, what are the next steps with Jamie's pop machine?
As long as it's behind the wall of personal property, it's, it's just okay.
Okay.
Not sure that electrical cord is up to code, but I don't know, uh, electrical code.
All right.
Guess that's a good question for Mike, is it beating code?
Is it beating code?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the pop machine at a public right-of-way was the point of the code violation. He moved on to private property.
Okay.
Well, not that, I can't speak on the cord, if it's, uh, an outdoor cord or indoor cord.
You need to go over there and weed eat around it.
That's private property. Well, we have cambers.
Well, on public property, I wouldn't mind seeing, like, vending machines that have water, Gatorade, or pop, like, over at the pavilion. I know that's something that would take our staff time to go to Sam's or whatever and buy it and stock it, if we didn't pay a vendor to do it, but I think it'd be a good thing to have there for the public or the disc golf people.
Vendors will stock it and just, like, take a commission, so.
Yeah.
You know, you just set the prices, and they would take their commission, but.
Okay, that's all I have, so I guess, with all the comments, we'll take a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
Second? Discussion, all in all?
Aye.